Hi, good evening. I want to call to order the regular meeting of the Carabelle City Commission. It's Thursday, April 6th, 26 and 17 at 6:00 PM. And we're at the Carabelle Municipal Complex. I'd like to ask Commissioner Allen to please say the prayer and then we'll set the pledge to the flag.
Our Godfather in heaven, we're so grateful that we have this beautiful day to enjoy peace and harmony of our world as we can find it and whenever we can find it. We're concerned with the various events going on in this country as well as in the world and we ask your careful watchful eye to be in guide and judgment over all those things. Be with us tonight as we meet together to deal with things that are best for the future of this lovely city we have. That you be with us, that we be wise in our judgment, patient in our understanding, that we might accomplish the most good for the lovely citizens that live here. And those that are sick, we're encouraged, I share our concerns with that, and be with them. In this we pray to Jesus' name, amen.
Applause.
To the flag of the United States of America. To the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
Okay, we'll move on to the consent agenda. And we have the March 2nd minutes of the regular meeting, the March 9th minutes of the special meeting, and approval of the attorney's and voices. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I made a motion to approve.
Okay, so we have a motion by Commissioner Mathis, the second.
I'm second.
And a second by Commissioner Manczy. Is there any further discussion on this? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion carries. And then we're at public comment. Is there any public comment? Okay, we have public comment. Mr. Bowman. And he needs the microphone. You're cold, aren't you? Cold there.
Trip over.
How's your high?
Well, I was...
To the turn.
I got...
Yeah, yeah.
You have... And you have... For the record. Thank you for the record, my eyes. Second counteracter.
You're fragile here.
You're all just crystal clear. My goodness. I'm thankful.
You see things we don't want you to see, then.
This is briefly, it's for the Forgotten Coast Plenary Quick Draw Event, which is scheduled for Carabelle on May 6th. And they requested the Marine Street Pavilion. I detailed out some things that we looked at and we thought would be necessary to do to pull this off. Plus, there's an event scheduled. Basically, the event is from 8:00 AM registration through 3:00 at the Carabelle, the Marine Street Pavilion site. And then after that, it will switch to Rio Carabelle where they hang the exhibit. The Quick Draw draws a number of artists, anywhere from 70 to 120, depending on which time you believe Joe Taylor. And... Just want to make sure you've got me on camera.
Yes.
Anyway, there's a variety of professional artists, amateur artists. They sign up. They will paint in Carabelle for, down around the waterfront and various places in town for a total of two hours, in which time the bell rings and done. They go back to the pavilion, put all the works out. There's a celebrity judge who will come and select 40 of the paintings. And they will hang for the next two weeks at the Rio Carabelle Gallery. It's one of the better shows that Plenary does each year, so I'm thrilled that we get to do that in Carabelle. The event of the Quick Draw itself draws quite a bit of people to town for that day. Some will stay and lodging for the weekend. It will fill the restaurants. It's a really good public relations type promotion event. I requested from Courtney that we have the pavilion for that time. And we requested 18 parking spaces that are directly in front of the pavilion and just to the right of the pavilion as you face it. We won't really be stopping any traffic on the two traffic lanes, so normal boating activity can take place around what we're doing. And basically, that's it. We're not really asking anything from the city per se that we wouldn't pay for, like a porta potty or someone. If we need a policeman, we'll hire them by the hour. Do you have any questions in general about that? Courtney, do you? I just wanted to be, everyone to be aware that that's going to happen. I think it's a really good event for the city. And I'll work out the details with Courtney in the next week or two. And we'll make sure that all the businesses up and down the waterfront know what's going on. They'll have a flyer that says the schedule. That's...
How many years has it gone this boat, here?
The Quick Draw Event?
Uh, yes, uh-huh.
I think they did the Quick Draw Event here before, they did it before I came. So it would be before 2012.
Uh-huh.
They've had, I think, a Plenary exhibit here. Chandler had a couple of years, I think, in History Museum.
Yep.
And then after that, they moved over. I've had, this would be my third summer, I think, or spring that I've had. The Quick Draw moves around. It'll go from Carabelle to Amherst Cola, East Point, to Port St. Joe, to Mexico Beach.
They do it up Indian Pats, too, don't they?
I think they do it. You know, they only have two hours from the time they ring the bell till the time it's over. So it really is kind of an exciting event.
So that's two hours to, if they're at the pavilion and they want to go somewhere else. That's like block to block, two hours, period, to travel.
Two hours. They have to be back at 12:00 o'clock. I wasn't sure about that. I thought they rang the bell and they had 30 minutes to get back. But they leave it, they get a stamped canvas, so they know which canvas they're painting on. And they start at 10:00, and at 12:00, the canvas has to be registered back in with the tables. So if they paint an hour and 45 minutes, they've been done, why? It's a really exciting event. It's one of the more, in terms of excitement, it's the most exciting event.
I know that it's advertised in the artist's world well, but will, how about the people in Franklin County? Will they know about it so they can, you know, how will they be advertised?
I'll talk to my supervisors.
So they're public wise.
The Plenary, I mean, they do a lot of publicity, but I don't know that, I like for the Quick Draw, you know, it's not like so much it's a spectator event as it is a participatory event for the artists that are in, that are in the Quick Draw. Then when it's more spectator oriented is when the gallery show is hanging. And that's when we would like to promote that we've got the Quick Draw show. It is many of those people who are here for the Plenary event to come to Carabelle, look at the gallery, walk around town, go to Cal's Gallery, go to eat lunch and do stuff. It's, I will promote it because it's a good thing for the gallery and it's a good thing for the art community and show.
Okay, thank you. Letting us know about it.
Thank you.
May 6th?
May 6th.
All right, Mr. Steve Allen.
Hi, that's a great, sounds like a great event. We come here having done the fly-in last month. And I don't know how many of you have saw the Carabelle crawl. The business, we're swamped with activity, restaurants. It's really good for the community. It's a lot of fun energy. So I'm here tonight to talk about the next one, the Carabelle Riverfront Festival, on the 21st and 22nd of April. That's Friday evening from 4:00 to 8:00, and Saturday from 10:00 to 6:00. We have music and all the stuff, and we have our show. On, I want to thank a sponsor or two, if you don't mind me indulging that, the Centennial Bank. And Novia is one of our major sponsors every year. We appreciate it. We count on them. We can't go without their effort, their support. ECT as well. Your accountant has also sent in a check. So there's a number of the vendors who work with the city who have contributed and we really appreciate that. I will, of course, support by doing Facebook on his activity so that you can use my social media outreach. So let me see what else there is now. This year, the special feature, you can always come up with a gimmick every year. So this year's gimmick is the Bell of Carabelle. And the Bell of Carabelle is the house that was formerly known as the Morehouse. And the Morehouse is what the CRA spent some money and were able to turn over and they restored it. And it's absolutely fantastic. It's a highlight of the Carabelle crawl. And it's a gorgeous building and a wonderful piece of community. It's just incredible. So the effort there by the CRA, who is also a major contributor to the event, Carabelle CRA. The improvements on the road, the sidewalks, the parking rigs, the boardwalk, the storefronts, the businesses in the stores, that's what this festival is all about. Because there are artists and craftsmen come down here to put on a show. But it's really about highlighting this community. That's the galleries and the museums and the culture and the way of life and our history. And we have the Avenue B exhibit, which is really a presentation of all of that. We have one more piece and then I'll be done. Two more pieces. One is the Senior Center is going to be dunking individuals for a period of time to raise some funds. And I can't imagine any better candidates than five, well, you two, six individuals. Well, I mean, that would be good, too. Seven individuals sitting in front of me would be great candidates for that and it would be helpful to the city. I'm sure they'll be asking. The other thing is I'm working to put together an execution plan on a map so that our city staff and those who coordinate, our labor from the prison system will have clear instructions on how it goes together. I know that that's going to be one of the challenges this year. Also working to make sure I use chalk on the marks and everything else is good. Any questions?
No, I would say go ahead and get accustomed to the way that you're having to work with the DOC, with the inmates and all.
Yes.
Because that's going forward.
Well, and that's part of me putting together a clear set of instructions that I can hand off to someone with a map. You know, eight picnic tables, three signs. I'll have all that inventory so that there are very clear instructions on how exactly we're in that. Then I'll meet with them and tell them, go over it, and then just be of service and try to get the finished crew coming behind it and execute the refined part of putting it all together. So if I can get the material down there in reasonable locations, I can hire six local people to come down and kind of situate things.
All right, and you're coordinating with the police department and that kind of thing?
Yes, ma'am.
I know you don't have to do it. You've done it many times.
Seven now.
All right.
All right, and please, come. It's fun time. We'd love to see you there. There are some volunteer activities for kids. I mean, you've done that before, Olivia. I'm sure Frankie could find something for you, too.
I'll have to check my agenda, see if it's my day that you get away.
I'll have my secretary call yours. All right, thank you.
I already did say I have time. Do I have to do that?
Well, you might need a refresher.
Oh.
Those have...
That's a good thing.
Right, well, they only have a lot of expectancy of so long.
And it's not even, is it?
Oh, no, no, but it should be 21. A quick story, truly, Caroline Spidey, y'all know Caroline Spidey? Carol Spidey, she's all this, but this tall and just a thin person. And she was the one coordinating for the Senior Center because they take care of the pavilion as a hospitality thing. And she was doing that several years and it's a challenge even doing that much. And I went out there at 4:00 o'clock on a Saturday when they had the dump tank two years ago. And I'm sitting there yelling at people and telling them, daring them to... She walked up and from full length away, she fought three balls at me and nailed me the first time. I didn't think she could throw that far. And she put me in. So once you're in, it's all right. If that's what you want, you want to get the best person up front. All right, thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Steve Allen. Okay, and we have Ms. Lisa Munson from the Carabelle Chamber.
Yes, we're just, we're still on.
Yeah, Lisa Munson with the Carabelle Chamber of Commerce.
And, okay, yeah. Okay, ever since I started at the Chamber of Commerce, one of the things Steve Allen has asked me was to do a car show. And I was like, what do I know about car shows? Well, this year, and actually, I've been working with the Forgotten Coast Cruiser since three days after the Riverfront Festival last year. Forgotten Coast Car, that's a new organization. It's a nonprofit organization. It is Sergeant Jim Ward with the Sheriff's Department and Bobby Turner. They have been going to every car show possible and handing out applications to bring their vehicles here. And also kind of tuning it up to say, bring your, bring your car to the one in Apple Ranch the weekend before and then stay here and cruise the coast and then be in our car show. So I'm pretty excited. I think we're going to have a lot more cars this year, a lot more interest. Like I said, they've been promoting it a lot about, at car shows themselves. I believe Mr. Ward has secured the Gulf Unmanned Systems front, the whole front area. So that also draws people over not only there, but past the Chamber and then past the downtown stores. So it gives, they'll give people another, they'll bring in a whole different group of people, too. And hopefully, you know, part of them will be at the festival, shopping, and some of them will be looking at the cars. So we're pretty excited about it.
And it's called the Forgotten Coast Cruisers?
Yeah, the organization is called the Forgotten Coast Cruisers.
And then bringing it on around there to that location, that opens up the festival to, you know, to another section of town.
Right, right. And so...
Is it the same day as the festival?
Yes, it's going to be Saturday, April 22nd. It's going to be 10:00 in the morning to 4:00 PM.
At the airport?
No, it's going to be, I believe right now, they've secured permission from Gulf Unmanned Systems to have it there, so it's on Highway 98. Because we had originally thought about doing it on Tallahassee Street up to Carabelle Junction, but because of the post office, we can't close off from 98 to the post office till afternoon because of the elderly people that need, you know, easy access to the post office. So to get a higher visibility, that is right there on my idea.
I think it's one of those. People come from everybody.
They're a lot, they're a lot of fun. I'm looking forward to, this year and next year will be even bigger when, when the Chamber understands a little bit about some marketing money. There was confusion, so there wasn't as much marketing out there. But one of the things with those events, or with Plenary, I will have to say, Chamber's got over 2,100 followers now and up to about 3,000 or 4,000 people that are reached every single week. And our newsletter gets out bi-weekly to over 300 people. So we're getting, I think there's been over 50,000 people that have looked at the Chamber website so far this year. So we get the word out. We get the word out. But I think it's way fun and I want to thank everybody and the Airport Committee on the fly-in. That was awesome.
And thank you for participating.
And everything was, all she backed, and everybody's going, next year, next year. But thank you. Come look at some great cars, because there's going to be some good ones there.
Okay, and thank you to Mr. Steve Allen for representing the Riverfront Festival at the fly-in. We appreciate that. We had a great expo there. Okay, then we'll move on to our Commissioner reports. Commissioner Walden?
Nothing.
Okay, and then Commissioner Mathis?
I have nothing.
All righty then. Commissioner Manczy?
I don't have anything from the Fire Department, but the fly-in was an awesome event. Everybody loved it. The kids loved, loved it. They didn't want to leave. But y'all done a good job. You're doing a good job. Thank you.
I didn't want to leave either.
No, no.
Anyway, all right, thank you. Anything else?
Nothing.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Allen?
I have nothing.
Okay, thank you. All right, so I do, but it's in, it's in large font, so it's not that long. I'll talk quick. On March 8th, Courtney and I attended the Local Government Veterans Affairs Legislative Subcommittee Meeting with Representative Paula Schiers. And that's where Schiers sponsored and presented Carabelle's request for House Bill 891 to dissolve the Carabelle Port and Airport Authority. And that Subcommittee passed the bill unanimously, unanimously. And on March 14th, the House Bill 891 went to the Transportation and Infrastructure Subcommittee, where it passed favorably. And then the bill is, was up for discussion this afternoon at the Government Accountability Committee. And I don't, I don't have a report on the results of that at this time. But I did contact all the committee members at the time for their support and vote. Then later on, March 8th, I attended the Restore Advisory Council Meeting where the final needs assessment was approved, was presented, and it has been approved by the Board of County Commissioners. We reviewed the selection criteria percentages suggested by the council members. And that, that has to be approved by the Board of County Commissioners. And during all this time, between our last meeting on March 8th and now, the Dewberry Consultant that was helping with the multi-year implementation plan left employment with Dewberry, and a new consultant has been assigned. And we're going to start up our meetings again on April 12th at 4:00 PM. On March 9th, we had a special commission meeting with two items for action. And we'll be talking about one of those items tonight. All of the members were present. We talked about the GUSC lease termination agreement. And then we had action concerning human resources on Saturday, March 11th. Of course, was Camp Court Johnston Parade, the Carabelle Airport Fly-In. And it was an incredible day for Carabelle. The weather was beautiful, and the water was, too. Both events went smoothly and both events were huge successes. And Mr. Sullivan's going to report more on that. On March 14th, as a member of the Tourist Development Council, I attended the Florida Tourism Day Conference in Tallahassee. And then all the attendees were scheduled to meet their district representatives to advocate for Florida tourism. And that was sponsored by the TDC. On March 15th, Russell and I were back up at the State Legislature where we attended the Agricultural and Natural Resources Appropriations Subcommittee Meeting. And Schiers once again sponsored Carabelle's House Bill 3387, requesting legislative appropriation to provide pot of water supply lines to 53 homes in the Lighthouse area, the same 53 homes that have been funded for Septic Sewer by the Water Management District. But yesterday, Vicky Summerhill, legislative aide to Schiers, reported that that House Bill is not in the House budget. And I've asked Marcia Mathis if we have the same request to the Senate side. And as far as I can see on the Senate bill, 225, 2250, that appropriations request is not on the Senate bill either. And I have not heard from Ms. Mathis yet. So that doesn't look so hot. On March 21st, we had our CRA budget reallocation workshop before our regular CRA meeting. And our major CRA projects right now are construction of the Marine Street Triangle Parking Lot and resurfacing of Avenue C with off-street parking with 11 additional parking spaces over that way on the corner of C and Marine Street. And then we're going to do some site improvements to those three lots that are at the base of the bell. And then milled asphalt on Southeast First Street right there. And then after that, we're going to be working on the Avenue B project, leveraged with CBPG funding. And that's going to be a big, big project. On March 21st, we learned that the Tilly Miller Park $50,000 FERDA grant application ranked 16 out of 100 applications submitted. And the Florida Senate and House, and the Florida, the Florida Senate and the House also have to approve those FERDA applications. And they published their budgets. The Senate budget proposed funding that Tilly Miller Park, all the small $50,000 grants. But the, the House bill does not have that. So, and they, the Senate Appropriations Committee voted in favor yesterday to fund, fund all those small FERDA grants. And I did contact all those Senate committee members, asking for their vote. So then on March 31st, I completed about a two and a half hour tour of the Hexport Building with Courtney and Russell Large and contractor Bill Bond from Tallahassee. And then they performed the inspection as directed by the commission during that special March 9th meeting. And Russell provided a report on that when we discuss it later. And I just want to wish everyone Happy Easter and, you know, have a nice time hunting eggs. Commissioner Mathis said if he, if he were to hide eggs, he wouldn't be able to find them five minutes later, so... You almost have, dress like an Easter egg tonight. Your Easter colors are on very nice. All right, okay, then we'll move on to the next item on the agenda, Staff Reports and Mr. Russell Large.
Thank you. I'll be very brief tonight. You should have our memo. One thing I would like to highlight in the memo is Sands Park improvements. We do have some clear direction at this point. We had a very good conference call with Courtney and the grant administrator. So already sent some information on that out today. Got, CFP Roberts, sent him information to revise his quote. And then a list of items, small in nature, that the city can procure related to that grant. And that leaves the big items to be done. So we're moving, moving forward with that. City Hall, there's an agenda item on that, so I'll reserve a comment on that. And then on the Water Management District Grant or the Lighthouse Project, I thought I would recommend that maybe we contact the Water Management District because they can't do their project without the water project. So they can't spend their money unless the water money is spent. So they, they may have some leverage with the legislature to try to get that back to the budget.
Okay, all right. Now, did they say, I know the day we were out there at the Water Management District, was it, is it six years? How long did they give us to complete that project?
I used to remember the answer to that, but I don't at the moment.
It's like they were going to give us some time to get the funding here for the water park?
Yes, I do recall that. I'll look that up and send it to you, buddy.
And it all has to go before the governor. Once they get their two budgets and work everything out, I think they get to get, I asked Mr. Fox today how it worked and he thinks that they come together, the House and the Senate, and negotiate one big budget that they send to the governor. Should we just go to the governor and just ask him for the money?
I think the way that works is items come off the list by the time it gets to the governor's office.
Yeah.
Not back off.
I know. But they're not on the list, so... All right, you contacted Water Management District.
All right, thank you.
Does anyone have questions first, Mr. Large? Thank you. And there's Ms. Tamara Sill with the Blue, and so she won't be here to report. We don't have a written report from her. So we wish her the best and hope she's well by Thanksgiving. I mean, Easter. Well, we do hope she's well by Thanksgiving.
I hope she gets better.
Easter, it's Easter, we hope. She's out of hunting Easter eggs. All right, and Mr. Butler isn't here. He's had death and his father passed. He's had death, and his, his father passed away. So, he's not here this evening to do Economic Development Council. And then, so we can move on to the Carabelle Aviation Advisory Board.
Hello? You got to make the notes. The fly-in, everybody knows, went really well. But it just far exceeded everybody's expectations. We had a lot of cooperation from everybody, a lot of people to thank, and we will be thanking everybody. But I wanted to especially thank Mayor La Paz, Aviation Advisory Board, city staff. Courtney and Keisha and Miranda and William Massey, Commissioner Massey in the Rose Department. There's plenty of others to thank, but everybody was very cooperative. And that, you know, the result was what we had. So, just some little statistics here. There's a, we figure over 1,000 attendees. We didn't have a good way to count them. But at one point, the traffic was backed up from the airport all the way to Hawk Wild. So, we forget at least 1,000 people there. Thirty-seven airplanes came in. We were expecting maybe eight, 10. So, that was phenomenal. We had seven display aircraft. Sold close to 300 meals before they ran out. But, you know, everybody understood that it was our first go-around and didn't hurt anybody's feelings. There was 112 helicopter rides and 42 youth flown with the Young Eagles. And they set up the pattern to go over the regional schools, so that when they turned, they could see the school coming back to Carabelle. The fuel system, we, we opened that up a couple of days before the fly-in. So far, we've sold 1,100 gallons, which is, to date, which is more than we thought we were going to. So, that's going good. Hangar renovations are coming along. Hydraulic doors are going to be the last thing, but the electricity's complete, and we're just waiting for Duke Energy to come in and turn it on. We had a visitor from the Florida Institute of Government, and he's came down to look at the airport and is going to help us with a future planning. Courtney and I are going to take a course or go with a consultant from FDOT for the JSIP program. That's, that's the way to do the planning out for the future, so that we can get a good handle on that. So, we'll have good future plans laid out. Tonight, you'll have the two resolutions for the airport. One is for the new box hangar. We were able to get additional money to complete the project. It's been, it's been a battle for over a year now, or a year now. So, we finally get the money that we need to build it with your approval. And another money that we had that is going to expire in June, that we want to use to put up a backup generator that we got from the Water Department, possibly two generators. That'll run the runways, the lights, the fuel system, the terminal building, and the doors, the hangar doors in case of emergency. So, I appreciate if you look at those when you want. Oh, yes.
I wanted to ask the dimensions of the box hangar.
100 by 40.
100 by 40? Okay, and then, so is there any type of, do you have an estimated construction date to begin?
Once you do the resolution today, I've talked to Kathy Construction, they're the ones that lined up to do it. They're ready to start.
Okay, alright, very good. And then I, I wanted to just mention, we, we had kind of discussed it, and I've seen it on the airport Facebook page. There is Facebook page of Carabelle Airport. Y'all are going to provide courtesy transportation to the Riverfront Festival.
Yes, we're going to get some volunteers lined up, so we'll have coverage from 7:00 in the morning until 5:00 o'clock in the evening. So, they'll be there for the tape sale run that starts, I think, at 8:00. And, and then show people back.
And I, I just wanted to, to mention, I haven't seen the paper, but there's supposed to be a full-page ad in the paper today.
I haven't seen it either, but that's, that's the thank yous for everybody that, that helped us. And it's quite a few people that did help.
Yeah, because everyone that really participated.
A lot of volunteers.
A lot of people were interested in it. And it had, you know, really had, to me, an unintended consequence of people being able, young and old alike, there, able to experience up close firsthand aviation operations. You know, being able to walk out on an airfield, a lot of folks have never had that opportunity with helicopters and airplanes coming and going, and seeing how they're directed, and the safety that's required and involved. And it was a good experience.
It was great, because it was for the people of Carabelle and also for the visitors that came here. Everybody really enjoyed it.
I picked a couple of flights.
Oh, you did. The, the folks that were there with the expo part of it, you know, really helped out to shine, to show our area, to showcase our area. And it was great.
Thank you.
And we appreciate everyone's help.
Just one question. He has a number of helicopter rides. There was a biplane, the yellow biplane. Did he keep a lot of how many trips he made around?
He didn't carry any passengers.
He didn't?
No.
Oh, okay.
No, he was, he went out to put smoke over by the parade, to fly over the parade. And he made a couple of runs down there, let the smoke out. And then when he left, he did the same thing. He came down the runway and smoked out. That was the last minute, we, we had a few last-minute things that just all came together.
I'm sorry, all day long, right? Just, I need a television or something.
He, well, he was just nice enough to go out there and get a show.
We had some, someone else was scheduled and canceled, like at 8:00 the night before. Yeah, so Red Dragon from Duffin.
That's cool.
Yeah.
It all came together.
Yes, it did.
We did see a buck and two does cross the runway.
Yes, I saw that.
Actually, John Lee, and he volunteered too to be out there with the phone truck, which was great. And he said he saw the six deer.
We've got a fence coming next year.
They were close too. They were close to where the airplanes were landing.
Yep.
You told me something interesting too, that the radio tower from Tallahassee directed traffic based on their listing of the fellows that were flying.
Yeah, we had a volunteer come from Tallahassee approach. And he came down on his own time, spent all day there with radio. And he, he said he was really impressed with, we, we put out directions to the pilots beforehand, so they knew what to expect when they got here. But he said everybody just cooperated, cooperated really well. The helicopter with the Young Eagles and the airplanes coming and going. So, it was a real safe operation, which was a challenge with that airport, because it doesn't have a taxiway, a parallel taxiway. So, there's a lot of taxiing up and down the runway. But it, again, it just worked out, and thanks to him, helped me out.
Thank you. We appreciate it. Mr. Hartman?
I have nothing. I, the only item I have, we can address under item two of rural business.
Okay, alright, that's fine. And then Ms. Courtney?
I just want to let everybody know that we've got our trash truck backed up and running. The only items that we're picking up is limbs and yard debris, because we can take that to the landfill for free. There are people still dumping some dump sites that, that we have to get, you know, here and there. But I would just want to let y'all know how much that costs us. Last, last week, we did two loads to the landfill, and it cost the city $360, just for the two loads. So, please don't put out anything that you're not supposed to. Remind your neighbors not to put anything out. If you see someone dumping something that isn't supposed to be there, please let us know, so we can send the police out and enforce that. Because they take the yard debris for free, but we're having to pay for anything else that gets dumped.
I think people's dumping it at night, because there was nothing, nothing on my road. When I come home at 6:00 o'clock the other morning, it gets full.
And if we can catch them, or we find their names in the pile, then we can take action on that. But a lot of times, like you said, they're dumping it at night, and they're leaving, they're already seen them, we don't, and you have to go pick that stuff up, you just can't leave it there.
Uh-huh, it's a health hazard to leave it there.
But it's, it is costing the city a lot of money.
Their, their landfill is charging now for anything.
Oh, yeah.
So, we'll have to reconsider this down the road, how we may handle it.
You'll take it.
If you can find it is, you know, sometimes we, we hope there's a dump outside. Tenth Street behind my house, and it came by.
I can handle garbage, and that'll cure a lot of it.
But when you have contractors dumping their, their leftover stuff at night.
And like couches and furniture and stuff, they're not going to put that?
That can't go in a waste park garbage can, so that's the, that's the worst part.
If you do see it, report it.
Because that's basically what they're putting out.
Does anyone have questions for Courtney? Okay, alright then, we'll, and then Ms. Keisha's away on floodplain training. So, our public hearing, we've got quite a few items, and we'll move right into that proclamation 01-2017, proclaiming April as Water Conservation Month.
Alright, proclamation 01-2017, where as clean, safe, and sustainable water resources and supplies are vital in the city of Carabelle economy, environment, and its people. And whereas the state of Florida Water Management District and the city of Carabelle are working together to increase awareness about the importance of water conservation. And whereas the city of Carabelle and the state of Florida designate April typically a dry month and water demands most acute as Water Conservation Month to educate citizens about saving precious water resources. And whereas the city of Carabelle is committed to setting a good example for its citizens regarding water conservation. And whereas every business, industry, school, and citizen can make a difference when it comes to conserving water. Now, therefore, we, the Commission of the City of Carabelle, Florida, do hereby proclaim April 2017 as Water Conservation Month in the city of Carabelle. And order all residents and businesses to help protect our precious water resources by practicing water-saving measures. Affirmed and signed this day Thursday, April 6, 2017. Just a quick vote on that.
Are there any questions? Is, is, does anyone have a motion regarding proclamation 01-2017 for claiming April 2017 as Water Conservation Month in Carabelle?
I'll make the motion to.
Okay.
Second.
Alright, so we have a motion by Commissioner Massey, a second by Commissioner Allen. Is there any more discussion? May have been all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion carries. Alright, then we'll move on to the, to the, one of our core resolutions. Resolution 04-2017, support for phase four of the old City Hall grant application.
Alright, resolution 04-2017, whereas the city of Carabelle values the preservation of its historic structures, including the Marvin and Justice Old City Hall. And whereas the city of Carabelle 2020 Conference of Plan includes a historic element, which sets out our value for historic properties. And whereas the city of Carabelle wishes to apply for a historic preservation's home matching grant in the 2019 cycle in the state of Florida. And whereas Carabelle is a rural economic development initiative, ready community. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the city commission of Carabelle commits its full support for this grant application. Be it further resolved, the city of Carabelle agrees to provide up to 1,250 in-kind match for this grant in the form of a grant administration necessary to meet all of the state of Florida requirements. Be it this fifth day of April in the regular monthly meeting of the city of Carabelle Commission.
Alright, thank you. This is a $50,000 grant application here to pay out during the cycle of 2019 cycle. And then, as Mr. Hartman mentioned, it has $1,250 in-kind match in the form of administrative duties. So, is there a motion regarding this resolution 04-2017 allowing the grant application to unfold?
Y'all make the motion.
Okay, and we have a motion by Commissioner Massey. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, and a second by Commissioner Mathis. Is there any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And then the motion carries. Resolution 05-2017.
Alright, resolution 05-2017 is a resolution authorizing the mayor to negotiate and execute a joint participation agreement with the Florida Department of Transportation to provide 100% grant funding to replace and upgrade the airport access gate, upgrade security video system, and install backup generator for emergency power to runway lighting and fuel system. Whereas the city of Carabelle needs 100% grant funding to replace and upgrade airport access gate, upgrade security video system, and install backup generator for emergency power to runway lighting and fuel system. Whereas the city of Carabelle City Commission wishes to take advantage of the generous offer of the Florida Department of Transportation to provide 100% of the funding to make these needed improvements at Carabelle Thompson Airport. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the city commission of the city of Carabelle, Florida, assembled in regular meeting on April 6, 2017, that the mayor be, and she is hereby authorized and directed to negotiate and execute a joint participation agreement with the Florida Department of Transportation. Document necessary to receive funding from the Florida Department of Transportation as follows. Florida Department of Transportation participation 100% at $17,000. City of Carabelle participation 0% at $0. Total project cost $17,000. Be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution be attached to the joint participation agreement between the city of Carabelle and Florida Department of Transportation, fully executed.
Alright, so we have a motion by Commissioner Massey to execute this JPA agreement with the FDOT. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, and a second by Commissioner Walton. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion carries. And then resolution 06-2017. Mr. Hartman?
Here we go. Resolution 06-2017, a resolution authorizing the mayor to negotiate and execute a joint participation agreement with the Florida Department of Transportation to provide 100% grant funding to design and construct a box hangar at the Carabelle Airport. Whereas the city of Carabelle needs 100% grant funding to design and construct a box hangar at the Carabelle Airport. Whereas the Carabelle City Commission wishes to take advantage of the generous offer of the Florida Department of Transportation to provide 100% of the funding to make these needed improvements at Carabelle Thompson Airport. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the city commission of the city of Carabelle, Florida, assembled in regular meeting on April 6, 2017, that the mayor be, and she is hereby authorized and directed to negotiate and execute a joint participation agreement with the Florida Department of Transportation. Document necessary to receive funding from the Florida Department of Transportation as follows. Florida Department of Transportation participation 100% at $380,000. City of Carabelle participation 0% at $0. Total project cost $380,000. Be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution be attached to the joint participation agreement between the city of Carabelle and the Florida Department of Transportation, fully executed.
Alright then, and this is a, an agreement to, for the FDOT to provide 100% funding to build that box hangar that we just discussed, $380,000. Is there a motion regarding this resolution?
Make a motion to approve.
Okay, thank you.
I'll second.
Alright, so we have a motion by Commissioner Mathis, a second by Commissioner Massey. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion carries. Okay, and that's, that's it for all of our resolutions and proclamations?
Sorry, we have one more.
One more?
We have a resolution.
Sorry, resolution 07-2017, alright.
And this resolution is, we talked about it at the CRA meeting, it's the reciprocal resolution or adoption of the contract for services agreement that we have. And this resolution is a resolution of the city commission of the city of Carabelle approving execution of an interlocal agreement for services between the city of Carabelle and the Carabelle Community Redevelopment Agency, providing findings, providing for an effective date. Findings, whereas the city of Carabelle is a forward municipally duly incorporated with all the rights and powers provided in section 2B of Article 8 of the state constitution. Whereas the Carabelle Redevelopment Agency, CRA, was established in 1992 pursuant to chapter 163 of statutes and of the Community Redevelopment Act of 1969. Whereas the CRA desires to contract with the city for administrative and maintenance support. Further into this desire, the CRA recognizes that it must be, must provide funding at a reasonable and agreed-on rate to the city for such activities. Whereas the city and CRA have agreed upon the terms of the contract for these services, which contains agreed-on methods of reimbursement and compensation. Therefore, be it resolved by the city commission of the city of Carabelle, Florida, that section 1, the city finds that the adoption of the interlocal agreement between itself and the CRA pursuant to section 163, 400, Florida statutes, attached here to Exhibit A is in the best interest of the city. And section 2, effective date this resolution to take effect upon its adoption by the city commission and signature by the mayor.
Okay then, and this is an interlocal agreement between CRA and the city to, CRA to help the city and for administrative and maintenance support. And we have discussed before that we needed to execute a contract for services between the city and the CRA. So, is there a motion regarding this, this resolution?
I'll make the motion.
Okay, so we have a motion by Commissioner Massey. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
I think I, I heard Commissioner Walton first, so we have a motion by Commissioner Massey, second by Commissioner Walton. Is there any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and any opposed? And then that motion carries. Now, that's the last of our resolutions. And we'll move on to new business. Item one, discussion and possible action concerning special exceptions. And so, the first item under that is Ms. Paula Cuddy regarding lots 10, 11, and 12 at the corner of Highway 98 East and Northeast Tenth Street regarding a bed and breakfast. And is Ms. Paula Cuddy here?
I do not see her.
Okay, so how, how we move?
Both of these, both of these items have been scheduled for planning and zoning meetings. However, since we're short on planning and zoning members anyway, we haven't been able to come up with a quorum, so that's why I did come up for you. Ms. Cuddy is wanting to build a bed and breakfast. She saw a commercial, she can do that without having to come before the board, but she wants to live there. So, that's what she's asking for, the special exception to live in a commercial business. And she has sent out all of her letters, and we have the return receipts, and everyone's been notified, and we have no objection.
I make a move to accept this special exception.
I'll second that.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Mathis and a second by Commissioner Massey to accept this application for special exception. Is there any discussion? And then I, I just have one question. Has she, by any chance, shown any, any blueprints or anything of the?
No, I haven't seen those yet.
Oh, I was just curious.
But she will have to bring them in before she pulls a building permit.
All right. I was wondering about the site, the square three.
So if she's gonna live there, I'm assuming she would be open twenty-four hours a day like from April.
And, and provide breakfast.
Right.
Okay, so then, is there any more discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And then that motion carries. All right, then, number two, under item one, is the CC Land Company requesting special exception at two oh three southeast thirteenth street.
And, sorry, Dan, I have to disclose, my, my wife owns half of the CC Land Company along with Ms. Butler, who's here to answer any questions on it, but I, I cannot, I have to reduce myself from that participation.
And Ms. Butler, do you have anything you'd like to say or explain to us, or?
I don't know.
Okay.
Make a motion to approve.
All right, then, we have a motion to approve this, a special exception request by Commissioner Mathis. Do we have a second?
It's a modular home, right?
That's the way I'm understanding it, it's manufactured instead of the mobile home that's here. Is that correct, Ms. Butler?
Yeah, it's a two-bedroom, two-bath mobile home.
Or is it manufactured?
It's a mobile.
Okay.
I'm second.
All right. Okay, so we have a second. Okay, so now, is there, is there any more discussion?
I'd like just to, just to say that.
Okay.
It's in this area of south, of southeast thirteenth street. The homes around it are mobile homes. We also sent out the letters, and we've had no objection to that.
Okay. And I did bring, off of Prazer's site, if y'all had a question of where it is, this is where we approved Ms. Rita Melander to put a, not Melander, why does it say Rita Massey, to put a mobile home there, and then it's, it's right here.
So someone's gonna live in it, right?
Yes, that's why I did the special exception for residential use.
I didn't know if that was gonna be the for business or something.
And it is on commercial there, so.
Yeah.
All right, then, is there any more discussion? Okay, so we have the motion by Commissioner Mathis, a second by Commissioner, who, who seconded that?
Allen.
Okay, Allen. All right. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And then that motion carries. Thank you. Okay, so we'll move on to old business, discussion of possible action concerning the GUSC lease. As I mentioned before, we had a special meeting on March the ninth, all of the, all of us were present for that meeting, and three directives came out of that meeting. One was to obtain a second opinion regarding the first lease amendment, paying attention to paragraph seven, and who actually owned the trade equipment that was removed. And then the second directive was to secure the serial number from the second remaining hoist so that we might research the original value of the hoist crane system or the bridge system that was removed and the value of it was installed today. And then the third directive was to request the city's engineer visit and inspect the building for structural and electrical and power issues. So number, on the number one, we did get a, and, and Ms. Courtney already handed you the, the letter of the analysis, the second opinion, and from Mr. Reva of Holland and Knight, and he, he talked with Courtney and Mr. Large and myself on a conference call for maybe a half an hour or so, and then he also was sent the, the original lease agreement that the Hexport Building Systems had, and then he was sent the amended first lease amendment that was done with GUSC and the city. And then he also understood how Greenstone and Hexport Building Systems, which was Hexport and then Greenstone was their daughter company, went out of business, went bankrupt, and that the lease was foreclosed on and held by Gulf State Bank, now Centennial Bank. So he understood all of, all of these things, and Courtney was there to make sure that he understood the, how, how it all happened. And his conclusion, as you see here, is that it's, it's likely classified, the equipment that was removed is classified as personal property as opposed to a fixture or real property, and during the discussion, conference call, we discussed the definition of personal property versus a fixture, a trade equipment versus a fixture, and he, he feels that it doesn't appear that the city would have the right to prohibit GUSC from transferring or otherwise removing the equipment from the building. And like I said, he had, he had the original lease, he understood about how the bank foreclosed on the original lease, and he had the first amendment to the lease that was dated twenty fourteen, and he reviewed all of those things, he asked Courtney questions, myself questions, and Russell. But he said that that section eleven B and eleven C was relevant for the purpose of the, of his analysis, that section on the original lease agreement with Hexport, and it says that Hexport will be the sole owner of any and all future improvements made on the premises, and that any and all equipment installed, stored, or otherwise present and in and around the facility at all times are the exclusive property of Hexport. And then he, he understood that, that Hexport purchased that equipment in two thousand eight after the May two thousand seven lease agreement with Hexport. And then the first amendment section, the first amendment to the lease for GUSC, that section of the lease said, again, that all, all equipment stored, installed, and otherwise present and in and around the facility on the date hereof is at all times exclusive property of the landlord or city, and shall be returned to the city in working condition at the end of the lease term with ordinary wear and tear, except for, which is where we had the, had the question, and this paragraph here in the, in the lease amendment agreement with GUSC, except for that there was added to this lease agreement, a list, exhibit B, that would list any property that the city was going to say belonged to them, and on that exhibit was listed, the word none was written. So he says that the city affirmatively, affirmatively stated that it owned no personal property located at the premises. So according to that, as long as the trade equipment was able to be removed without material injury to the premises, and then it remained the exclusive property of the tenant, and it could be removed under the terms of the lease. If, if the equipment is removed and it damages the structure or the foundation of, of a building, then they are removing a fixture. Fixtures cannot be removed. But they were able to dismantle the, the hoist or the system and the bridge system and, and take that off of the, the I-beams that were manufactured especially for this bridge system. The I-beams were built with the building, they were constructed with the building. So they didn't take the I-beams, but they, they were ready to do that. So as you read, it belongs, you know, it, it would be very difficult, we talked with him about, we understand that it was taken to Andalusia, Alabama, and that since it's been dismantled, pieces and parts may be in bags or whatever, you know, bolts in here and there, and it would be very costly, he said it would be very costly to try bringing that back across state lines. And so now we have, we were able to, my husband actually did research, and he was able to locate the serial number, so he's gonna tell you all about that and tell you about what the equipment was valued when it was installed, and what, what we value it today. So, you know, you can help decide how, this will help you decide how you want it to go.
Greg Christensen, I just broke this up so I could be quick about it, but first contacted the building contractor for Hexport, which was Big Fish Construction, to ask them whether they had installed the hoist or not, and they said that they, they were not the installer, but he did say that they had a lien against Hexport for a hundred thousand dollars, that they did not get payment for the construction of the building. But he did recall the crane hoist system, but they didn't put it in. And as I told the commission on that special meeting on March ninth, I contacted the hoist manufacturer, R and M Material Handling, Springfield, Ohio, from the photo that was taken in two thousand twelve, and they're just the manufacturer of the hoist. They did not manufacture the entire crane system, they just supply hoists for, for various manufacturers. And they said they couldn't research without the serial number, so they gave the only authorized dealer of the hoist in Florida, which was Advanced Overhead Systems in Lakeland, and spoke with this Dave Roberts. He said he was not the installer of the system, but he was familiar with Hexport Building because he had performed a service call on both cranes, and the reason he remembered it was because he never got paid for his service call. And, but he said he could probably look up the serial numbers on the work order that when he came up to do the work. But in the meantime, I was told by R and M Handling where I could locate the serial numbers on the hoist systems. So I met with William Massey on, at the Hexport Building on the afternoon of March fourteenth to help him locate the serial numbers on the remaining hoist, but we discovered that the second hoist had been removed as well. And then Mr. Massey and I were trying to determine whether the I-beams were installed at the same time as the original installation, and he remembered that Rod Gashi had been out there taking photos the whole time the building was going up, so I contacted Rod, and he had the photos, and from viewing those, you could see that the beams were installed and welded in there at the time the building was built, and later that, that was not included in the, in the original quote because they were already installed. Then I went back to Mr. Roberts at AOS and asked him if he would consider looking up those records, you know, when we might even, you know, if we had to pay him, but he said he would. He hesitated at first, but he did finally give you the serial numbers. I contacted R and M back and with the two serial numbers, and they were able to tell me that the crane was manufactured by Mass Crane Hoist Services in Clemson, Massachusetts, and it was delivered and installed at the Hexport Building by their company. And then I called Mass Crane and was put in touch with Matt Giyosi, and he was very helpful and provided me the original quote for the systems. I have him, Courtney has copies if you need one. And the actual invoice for the, for the two systems. And he said that the cost of the two systems, if they were installed today, would be around ninety-five thousand. And I wrote him back and asked him, what would the cost be just for the items that were removed, which would be the hoist and the lift and the bridge of the twenty-four-foot system one, and then the hoist and the lift that was taken, removed from system two. And he gave an estimate total of sixty thousand to replace the missing items.
Okay, thank you very much. Do y'all have any questions for, for Greg? Okay, so then the third directive was that we would have the engineer, the city's engineer visit and inspect the building, and so give us a report on what you saw and found.
Okay, we, we inspected the building along with contractor Bill Bond from Tallahassee. Wanted to make sure we had someone there who was familiar with building systems more so than a civil engineer, so brought him along. But we reviewed the condition of the building as it relates to the structure, electrical, and plumbing condition, and also the interior office that was built out, we also reviewed it. So I'll just summarize these items, and I have this in a written format, and I'll provide that to Courtney if you'd like to review it. On electrical, the overhead lighting was found to be in working order. Electric service panels were found to be in fair condition and operational. Plumbing, the restrooms were built during the original construction of the building. The meat code requirements, the water services was disconnected to the building, so we weren't able to operate those plumbing fixtures, but they appear to be in working order. There's some cleanup that is required in those restrooms, just some general cleanup. As it relates to the building structure, it was apparent that the short-span crane was entirely removed, as Greg indicated, except for the I-beams, which were the original with the building. On the long-span crane, that span is still in place, but the hoist is removed. Based on the coating and the treatment of the steel members, it is apparent that those rails were provided and constructed with the original building. Generally, the structural elements of the building did not appear to be damaged, and the exterior facade was in good condition. We did note some items that were not in working order. One is the electrical mechanism, which opens the roll-up doors. We tried to switch, and those doors did not operate. The exhaust fans also, we attempted to turn those on, and we were not able to turn those And then relating to the interior office build-out, Mr. Bill Bond inspected the framing, it was found to be within substantial performance with the Florida building code. Mr. Bond indicated the workmanship was substandard, however, and we noted irregular hallway edges along the ceiling edge in particular. Not necessarily code violation, just substandard performance. Further investigation of building code and fire code ingress and ingress requirements would be recommended if the space were to be used as a public facility such as a temporary We did discuss briefly the idea, the concept of using the facility as a temporary city hall, and noted that the interior would require additional build-out, in particular for the commission meeting room. Installation of HVAC units for air conditioning and heat could be installed to support that. And planning, design, and construction for such improvements would require several months to coordinate and accomplish. That's the summary of our study, and I'll be happy to try and answer any questions.
And so do you all have questions? Okay, I just wanted to reiterate that if, if it was for public use, any type of public use, that we would need to somehow build out walls to access, have another entry or exit, emergency exit. Right now, to that build-out area, there's only one, one in-and-out area. And then the restrooms are separate from it, so we would have to somehow build a hallway that would lead to another entrance or exit, and then the hallway would continue on to lead to the restrooms. And then I wanted to mention that there is a fire suppression system in there, too, you know.
That's true. The building is, does have a substantial sprinkler system, that's right.
But then the, we discussed the potential fire safety or hazards there with the build-out, that we might need to have a fire marshal inspection or something, we may need to cover that whole build-out with fire crew sheet rock?
Um, yes, especially if you sublet the remainder of the building for another use that may have combustible material, you would wanna make sure that you fire rate the outside.
And the roof would need that as well?
And the roof, yes.
Okay, okay, 'cause right now the roof is just insulation and drop ceiling?
Um, yes, I, I wouldn't call it drop ceiling, it's, it's a constructed ceiling.
Okay, sheet rock ceiling, and then insulation in the next, that's for a roof on that build-out. Okay.
Mayor, since you mentioned that, I do have a question. How, what kind of provision would be made for the people to pay their water bills here that so simply come in, have out there, that drive in or pick up window or whatever? Is any idea, any plans on that?
Um, I, I don't think that a drive-through type window would be practical considering where the interior build-out is located. So it would be So it would be similar to City Hall here where you would bar and come in and pay. But I think you have a shorter distance to walk.
Yeah, right.
So the building, the interior build-out was a forty-by-ninety, thirty-six-hundred square feet. But then there was one area that was like the wire and communications paneling, big electric panels. So that part of that build-out was really, is not finished off.
That's right.
So it was about, that was about a hundred square feet or somewhere around?
Yeah, so we're looking, so we're in and we're at a thirty-five, thirty-six hundred square.
So that would need about, what, six tons of air conditioning, five tons, two, three tons? Okay. And then if we were to build out the additional approximately square foot area that we had already put up some, actually, those were the flooring, flooring for the building. And that's why they were so high, not the sidewalls floors. That was about a thousand square feet that I can tell from my pictures we did measure. So that would be another two-ton, something like that, air conditioning. So it's gonna need, you know, I, we were there and I said, what do you think, thirty thousand? It doesn't have hot water heaters, needs hot water heaters. Probably two for inline hot water heaters or something.
Right, there's that Insti-Hot, which is an electric unit that creates hot water at the source.
And there's two restrooms on each side, the north and south side of the building. But the men, male and female, you know, two units on each side.
And I'm understanding we're looking at this as a temporary place while we build something else somewhere else and buy some more property, build another big building, and gonna put all the money in that for the temporary? Is that what we're talking about?
Well, we'll get to that in our next agenda item.
But you can answer that question though now.
You can answer, yes, I can.
That's being considered, that's right.
Yeah, we're gonna put all this in a temporary thing, and then we've got to come later and talk about what we're gonna do with these other options. Okay.
But yeah, mostly we wanted to get, for this item, the condition of the building.
Yeah, okay. Sounds like we got it.
And then it has, there's a lot of debris left in the building. I don't know what, it's not building construction material.
Let's see, it's from the old bank.
Yeah.
Safe deposit boxes, just miscellaneous.
All the phone system communications, the one bathroom, female restroom, which is, the restrooms are fairly large. It's just loaded with, and it's pick trails actually through there. It's just loaded up.
You cleaned out one building and put in the other.
And that is left now for us to, for the citizens to have cleaned out. And we know it's gonna cost from what Ms. Courtney just reported.
Oh, yeah, and thank you for the cause of our handy.
And I mean, the walls, all the walls are just lined with whatever they have.
And they weigh it when you go over there.
And there's two big motors in there. Now, what are these boat motors of some sort?
You know, I'm not sure. I'm assuming that, you know, there's a, there's a space in the back left corner that has Kent Ward Johnson boats.
Yeah.
And I'm wondering if maybe those engines came out of that or.
No, no, they're huge engines.
That boat's a model of the landing craft.
They're big engines sitting on pilots, you know, or I should have brought a picture of those.
They must have been blew up and took them.
Well, I think he subleased some space to a man that works on boats. And I don't know if they belong to him or if they belong to them. But they're there, they belong. If we sign, when we sign this lease termination agreement, they're gonna belong to the citizens of Caravelle. And I'm trying to think what else. Of course, there were some Christmas decorations, you know. There's, but there's a lot of heavy, heavy items in there.
Lots of doors.
Doors that would have been used in the modular construction.
We can have curb alert first before we have to holler down there.
And what is that?
Where you put everything beside the road and tell everybody to come get it, and it's open. They do that in Tallahassee. They do it in Tallahassee. Come get it quick. They'll put a time, it's gonna be out here on the side of the road from nine to two or something like that, and people will go get it. And then they have to, they have to remove it after that. I see that all the time.
One of them walks outside the road for three weeks, nobody pick it up.
And so the electricity has, had been turned off in the city. Courtney had go ahead, or Miranda did, get the electricity, the power turned on so that inspection could be done. And the water's been turned off. Their gate has been run over several times. Now it's pulled over to the side. That'll have to be repaired. There is a security system in it, but we haven't activated it. Courtney has to see if it works or not, so.
One other question. Do you have a, let's put you on the spot. I just an off-the-wall guess as to what kind of money we're talking about to get this set up before we can use it.
I knew you were gonna ask.
You did, I thought you were gonna ask.
I don't know that I'm very confident in giving you a number. I'd like to involve Bill Bond with that and put some thought into it before we tell you a number if you don't mind.
Okay.
All right, so.
Good move.
Any more questions? Any more questions?
I knew you would say that.
All right, then, do we have any more questions for Mr. Lard? Or if we do, you're right there, so we'll just revert to you because we're gonna go ahead now and discuss the, okay.
Sorry, to wrap up this item, a couple of things ago, we talked about the termination is the commission. What do you want, myself, or what do you want me to do as far as engaged with them? I think we need something of record, recorded, the county records, providing, giving the city possession of this property so that doesn't, no one, right now, it still appears that they have a twenty-five-year lease.
It does. I think, I agree with you. I think we need, we need some form of.
Finality.
Yes, a lease termination agreement of some, of some sort. You know, we need to, we need to close it. It needs to be closed and finished.
Yes, I have an intention to do that.
But we, the one that Mr. Hartman presented has some wording in it that I don't know if I really care for. And, you know, we already, we already talked about it. We're at waves of both parties of any, which each party, you know, of any kind of damages, rights, liabilities in the future whatsoever. And then the one that I just mentioned to Mr. Hartman this afternoon after being in the building, it says that, you know, the tenants shall remove all its trade fixtures and personal property, which he moved, removed property that was actually there when he came there, but he allowed it to be removed. And then repair damages to premises caused by removal. But evidently, you know, the contractor and Mr. Russell looked, and there was no damage caused by the removal. Leave such premises in reasonably good condition, broom swept clean, you know, repair and anything that needs to be repaired. Well, it's not, certainly not broom swept clean. It's full of stuff. The restrooms are gagging. So, you know, it's, you know, it's not, it's gonna take some labor and cleanup and debris removal cost on that to get it. And then we could discuss whether or not we want to keep that build-out. But as Mr. Melander recorded at our last meeting, he was correct. The build-out is built at the only loading dock. That building has one loading dock where a semi-truck can come up and unload at an even level. All the others would, all the other hangar doors or doors would have to have a ramp to unload and load. You lift up the hangar, the door, the loading dock, and it is a window, an interior window, to what would be like a reception room, built out as an office. And that is the only window in this thirty-five-hundred-square-foot build-out on the inside. So if you wanted, if you, if a manufacturing company wanted to use it and needed a loading dock, all of that build-out is gonna have to be taken out. And as Mr. Melander mentioned, that could be a liability, more construction debris that has to be taken out. So we would, we're gonna have to have under consideration, do we wanna leave that? Are we gonna maybe advertise that the build-to-suit, that we would take it out if somebody wanted it out? Do we wanna put more money in it thinking that it's gonna have to come out in the future? You know, there's a, there's, it really, if all of you all have, any of you been over there?
I've been over there.
Okay, so do you understand?
I understand what you're talking about. Loading docks built is right with the, they build the office space. So they plan on using a loading dock, there's no way they can.
No, so all of that would have to be removed.
But if you're gonna use it for temporary city hall, that big bay door, you'd have to bring it in and put some dumper doors to make it handicap accessible. But this, I looked at, it's a pretty nice office space area.
But it's not useful if there's no air conditioning.
Well, we'd have to pump some money in it.
Yeah, you have to pump some money in.
We pumping some money in this every month already, so.
All right. So what do you all think about, how do we wanna terminate the agreement with Mr. McCormick? I, I go ahead and say something.
What I read here in the comments, I'm sorry, did you? There are two things in the last paragraph. Accordingly, it appears the city affirmatively stated that it owned no personal property located in the premises, including but not limited to equipment. And then on the last line of the third, second page, assuming that the equipment is deemed personal property, the city did not identify the equipment as sitting on personal property and exempt the V that says none on the First Amendment. Couple of the language in the First Amendment, forbidden so and so forth. Looks like to me that we have no claim of any of the equipment. And I think we ought to just move on around and get this thing signed and get on with it. I mentioned that in the last meeting, and this can drive you out. It's costing a lot of commotion to everybody, we're all involved in it. And, you know, what it would cost us to pursue this legally, plus the fact that there might be defenses, people wanna put on a defensive share. And in the meantime, there are things that we need to be doing to get on with our city business. And so I'm in favor of going ahead and signing the foreclosure lease.
The mayor had already read that, but in his lease, he's supposed to clean it up. There's probably thousands of dollars worth of trash left in there that we're gonna have to pay for.
Yeah, I understand that. There's also the fact that he's spent some several thousand-dollar building that inside, so there's, there's a quid pro quo, what's it say?
But there's also the fact that we might have to spend several, the citizens may have to spend several thousand dollars carrying that out so that it can be used as a manufacturing facility as it was constructed for in the first place.
That's true.
And that was built without building permit, and it was built without notification to the city. And even no notification to the city administrator that that was being constructed in that building. But I don't think that we'll be able to get, you know, you're not gonna be able to get anything out of, anything else.
I'd agree with him that we need to put this thing in bed and cut or lost. Because according to this, what I read right here, that also probably says none.
Yeah, and it would be costly to bring it. It would probably, I asked the attorney on the conference call, would it, we had an idea of what it was valued at at that time of the conference call. And he says it would cost, it would cost sixty thousand dollars or more in attorney's fees to try to bring that equipment back.
And there's no guarantee we'd win the case?
Yeah, it would have to go to court. You'd have to have a jury that would.
Yeah.
And then if the, what condition is it gonna be when it comes back? So I really, I'm not anxious to try to get the equipment back. I just.
I was on that jury and read that part where we said we didn't own nothing in that. I'd go to the other man.
Yeah. So how do we want the, what I'm asking you all now is I'm paying attention to the lease termination agreement, agreeing that we do need to terminate the lease. But how do we want the lease termination to be worded, is what I'm asking.
I'd say let our attorney have it.
Close it out.
I'm not no lawyer, so I can't tell you what we need to do. We need to see if we can finalize it some way.
And this will finally, it had a lease on it since two thousand seven, is that right?
Since it was, yeah.
And this will finally put close, put a close on the lease, close on the job requirements. We can finally rent the building for what, and we do, we need to find out what is the market value of that building? What's the market value of rent for square footage on a manufacturing building like that? We need to know those things. But finally, close out the lease and start using that building so that it will be of some value and economic impact to the citizens who invested in there. So what do you, how do you think we should move forward? Do you have any special wording? Or should we just go ahead with this agreement that you?
This agreement was drafted, this agreement was drafted before he moved out. Now, it's my understanding that he has vacated the property. And that getting him back, which I have had no contact with him or anything else, I don't know. But from what we're saying is there's that language in there that talks about his obligation before he leaves would be to leave it in broom swept, you know, just basically clean and dish it. He's left now, he's gone, it's past the March date. So he's gone, obviously, I could, this is a two-party agreement. We would have to agree to it, he would have to agree to it. And obviously, I could ask them to say, hey, the city's willing to sign this, but you need to come back and clean up the mess. He may say, or I can report back, but according to Courtney, that he may say, I'm done, I'm gone, don't look to me for anything. And then it's up to us to decide, do we just basically, I can remove that, I ain't gonna believe it in there, but we're getting this done. I mean, it's not in broom swept condition, there's metal in there where it goes to the dump or goes to the scrapyard. We're dealing with that. And that, but that's up to the commission, obviously. He hasn't signed this agreement, so he's under no obligation to leave it in broom swept condition at this point.
And then they'll take us another month, we'd have to come back another month.
And it's gonna take, you know, over a month, or it might take six months to get the place cleaned up. So, but we did do our due diligence and did do research and found out what the equipment would be, was valued at, what it would be valued at today, and whether that would offset the cost of trying to reclaim the equipment, you know. And we had a second opinion, just like Mr. Hartman said.
Oh, yeah, we're not getting that.
No. So, you know, we had the engineer look at the building, and we did all of the things, due diligence. There's, I, you know, I just don't know what else we can do. He has been cooperative with the working by allowing some people to get in there to see the building and do a girl inspection. We'd have to have a fire inspection. We'd probably have to have electrician, you know, a regular electrician come back and look at if we thought we'd have any uses for anything in the building, the build-out part of it.
Well, I say we sign the lease agreement.
Termination.
Lease termination.
Lease termination agreement, be done with it, and let's try to move on.
And I know it's a hard pill to swallow, yes.
Does the lease negate any further removal of items that are considered personal property or trade equipment or anything like that? I mean, once you've signed it, is he, or can he come back and?
I will revise it to not, because right now, obviously, it was drafted to be prospective, that he would, you know, it was beginning of March, he'd be out by the end of March. We have agreed. So now we're kind of at the back that he is, I don't say a man of the property, but he's left the property. So I can make that change, that it's, you know, effective on the date it's signed. So if he signs, he doesn't need to ever come back.
And that he nor Mr. Atala, neither one of them will be able to come back and take any more equipment out of that building.
He's, Mr. Atala doesn't have any contractual rights.
Well, he can.
But he only has what Gulfman Systems gave him. I mean, he's a guest of them or whatever, call them. But, yeah, no, this will put an end to, the city will have ownership and full possession of. I mean, he's a guest of them or whatever, call him, but, yeah, no, this will put an end to, the city will have ownership and full possession of that property. We recorded it at the county records, and it's ours. I mean, for the first time since that was built, we have full control ownership of that possession and ownership of that property.
So, you know, you feel like, well, you can't, it's hard to say, you're gonna let somebody all scot-free, but, you know, we've got to, to move forward. As Commissioner Allen says, we, we need to, we need to put a close to.
We got a second opinion, and it wasn't in our favor.
That's correct.
And that's what we, reason we done this, and I'd say let's, let's don't hold it up and have him come back to take a room sweep it out. We got him making.
He's not gonna do that.
Well, we knew that, but we don't wanna hold it up.
No, so.
Just cut out our losses.
And get it out of there.
All right, do we want to have a motion or a directive to have Mr. Hartman revise the agreement and make it up to date here like he's just discussed? And then how would we, do we want a way to us to sign, or we wanna have a special meeting to, to?
Remember, it's, it's not up to us completely, I mean, this is a two-party agreement.
Yeah, that's true.
So, if you all say, hey, we approve, we, we approve termination of this lease, I will make clerical revisions to the termination that you have just so that it's, that everybody understands, it's clear when someone signs it, that it's effective the day it's signed. This lease is over the moment the day you sign, but then I have to send it to either him or his attorney, and they're gonna review it, and there goes, if there's any changes.
He has an attorney?
What I would assume. If he does, I have to deal with the attorney, if not, I'll, I'll send it directly to him. Courtney, you have, you have the email, yeah. So, we'll, we'll send it to him, and I think it'll, I don't know, I think it'll be, you know, for everybody, I think it'll be fine. I don't, I don't know if it'll be a problem, but, but problem. But if there is a problem, it'll come back before you all, a special meeting or regular.
All right, does someone wanna make a motion then to direct Dan to revise the lease termination agreement? And to contact Mr. McCormick for signature?
I'll make that motion.
I'll say.
All right, so we have a motion back, Commissioner Mathis, and a second by Commissioner Massey. Is there any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And then that motion carries to revise the lease termination agreement and, and send it forward. And, you know, there's, there's things that we could discuss briefly to talk on how we were gonna move forward with this building. But that's really another topic, and we need to get that on the agenda next round. But I would just say that we really need to take a, take some time, take a good look at that building, see how we wanna market it. We, the gentleman that Mr. Sullivan talked about that came from the Florida Institute of Government and Florida State University, he's the director of science and research there, he came there and looked at the airport, he looked at the Hexport from the air. I sent him over a hundred photos of the Hexport, and he actually came here and toured this whole complex here at the city. He's going to look for some USDA grants and some, some type of grant money that he might be able to find that could help us on any of those three projects, the airport, the Hexport building, or, or this building. Or, he's in touch with people that can do professional marketing through the workforce and the economic job impact folks that work with the district of Florida, nine counties, like the Accellatric Regional Planning Council, those nine counties. So, you know, we just need to, I feel like, take our time and see how we can, what's the market value of this property? And see how we can move forward and put it to the best use for its citizens.
Oh, yeah.
This is the first time in ten years it's been in the possession of the city, and there's no need to, to jump to conclusions. Get it cleaned out and, and see what's right and.
We've come out of winter anyway, we look at it.
All right, so, we'll, we'll put that on the, yeah, so, once we get possession of it, then we'll, we'll see what we can do. All right, y'all have any suggestions, you know, just feel free to say it now, or speak to Courtney later. So, then, anything else on this, this topic for now? All right, so we'll move on to the, the next item, which is discussion and the same one that we've been talking about for two and a half years or three years. Discussion of possible action regarding relocation of City Hall. So, here we go.
Well, you know we have an air conditioning issue right now, and we only in April. You come in the building this afternoon, it's hot, it's gonna get a lot hotter than it was today.
But that can't be repaired.
But we got that temporary city hall over at Airport, it's gonna burn every day.
But now, I'll tell you what, though, it's gonna take, just as Mr. Mr. Large says, I don't, I don't perceive we could be in there by, by summer.
Probably not, but maybe by a fall.
Maybe, but I, I would like to say that I would not, I'm not in favor of putting a lot of money into that building. Now, when we were over there, I asked Mr. Large and the contractor, I said, so what do you think when we're talking about the air conditionings? And then build out, more build out, it's gonna need more build out. It's gonna need probably fifteen hundred, two thousand, with the hallway, fifteen hundred square feet or more of build out.
Okay.
And you're talking about a roof and flooring and electric and air conditionings. And so, I said about thirty thousand, and they, the looks on their face like I'm, I'm, I was underfitting it. I'm not in favor of putting more money into something that's not gonna be a long-term, long-term.
Then, then that keeps pointing us back to the old City Hall. We keep talking about money, 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 that we don't have. We own the old City Hall. We can rent a space for the museums, the old Caribou Pharmacy is available right now. So, if money's the problem.
Have you seen the price on that?
Not.
Have you seen the price on that?
I'm looking for it.
You don't wanna pay it, you'd rather stay out here and pay the life bill.
Well, we wouldn't do that.
But also.
If there're two in that Hexport that made it, what y'all think we gonna do?
I, I, I honestly think we need to work towards a desirable end goal, and that is a, a building that's built purpose specific for City Hall. That's what I think.
What are we gonna do about, to then? What's these poor workers, if you're gonna do this something?
We're gonna have to get some of these little Mitsubishi air conditioners in here.
Let's get them ordered, then.
Yeah, but I, I wanna tell you, I think that we need to forget about the Hexport building moving out there, because you're putting a lot of money, staff, productivity, and effort, and just for something that we might tear out. We don't know if that's gonna, if that, you know, somebody, we, what we, that building was built for jobs, to have, have jobs. I mean, it's got parking spaces all around, and you could, you probably have a hundred parking spaces or more all around there. If, there are supposed to be employees in that building.
Oh, I agree.
And that's what we need to, to market it for. And if they have employees in there doing work, that, they may not want that built out. So, it's risky business to start putting a lot of money into that. So, that's, I, I would say, personally, I would say forget the old City Hall building, because it's gonna be too controversial. You're gonna have a big fight on your hand with the historical folks.
I understand, it's a big air conditioning order then.
And then the mini mall, I'd say, you're, you're putting a lot of money into something, the old City Hall's gonna have to have revisions, but of course, that's gonna be, that would be repairs to city property. I don't really have a problem with that. The water plant location, Southeast Avenue C, that's gonna take a lot of site prep, but then you're in another controversy to fully utilize that site, you're in the controversy of the, of the old water plant building that the historical folks want to, want to keep, so you can't fully utilize that site. I would say.
Well, they just gonna have to get over it. I mean, really, they would have to get over it.
They would.
We don't have a half a million dollars right now.
No, we don't, but we're gonna, whatever we do, we're gonna have to get a loan.
Yeah.
To do it.
Oh, yeah.
And we have an offer of a recent price property at the corner of Highway ninety-eight and Twelfth Street for fifty thousand dollars. I would suggest that the city buy that anyway.
I've already talked to her.
And?
I've talked to the lady that answered.
Is it still for fifty, have you talked to her recently? Okay, and I would say just, just bite the bullet. I mean, the bullet's gonna have to be bitten sooner or later, the longer you wait, the more it's gonna cost.
That, that property will worth fifty thousand dollars.
And go ahead and, I, you know, I'm just, this is just my opinion. Get that property, get Anovia to start working with the staff on metal building. They're putting up beautiful metal buildings all over Tallahassee, something with a nice facade, something that would have a gable roof, that's not gonna be a flat roof like a lot of the metal buildings, and, you know, you wouldn't have so many roof problems down the road like we have here. And they could start, they could do a conceptual of a metal building that would fit on that property, because really, you need to know where your property is and the lay of the land, know which design and building around it. That way, administrat, that administrative staff stays in place, they're not spending productivity time and money moving somewhere and then moving again. Notify the occupants in City Hall that there's gonna be a, a timeline, you know, eight months, a year, I don't know, I, you know, I honestly don't know, but there'll be a timeline. Mr. Waddell offered, if, if we use it for engineering, that he would pro bono repair, repairs and plans to the Bay Building back in the back. Take a portion of that Bay Building, have that repaired and upgraded, and move the nest back there. Move the nest right back there, there's, we're still in compliance with the agreement that we have, that this agreement with the school board, that they stay on the old school site property. And go ahead, put them back there, give them notice, that's where they're gonna be moving. And while all of this is happening, there, there's gonna, there's gonna have to be repairs, the restrooms need to be repaired back there, there needs to be some cleanup. Let staff decide how much needs to be built out. There's gonna be some sheetrock work inside, it needs to be cleaned up inside and outside. It's, it's doable with, back here, that is doable. And, you know, I have suggested in the past to even move City Hall back here temporarily. It's a good building.
Oh, yeah, it's big.
Good foundation, but just a portion of it, not the whole thing, they don't need the whole thing, eleven thousand square.
Oh, yeah, they don't need the whole thing.
And then the staff moves one time over here to this location. Not, don't, don't build out the field house, it's really bigger than they need, that field house is not owned by the city. So, there again, you're putting money into a property that's, that's not owned. They haven't really expressed that they really want to go to the field house, they have parent-teacher meeting over here, and no, they, they, they don't, the manager of the after-school program doesn't want, she expressed that, that she doesn't wanna go to the field house, so. That's just a plan, my plan of action. How about Commissioner Allen, does he have a plan of action?
I do.
Okay.
But I'm not prepared to present it at the time.
All right, do we need to have a workshop so you can present it?
That'd be fine.
I'll say that, but.
Okay, when do y'all wanna have the workshop?
Up to a totally week, get built, but.
What, how soon did y'all wanna have it? Not up to me, but I mean, I'll.
Sometimes a month, it'll, it's whatever's convenient.
Um, thirteen, I mean, next week, the thirteenth, um, to do.
When's the thirteenth, though?
The thirteenth is a Thursday. I have a city out here in a court at ten fifteen.
I got a doctor.
Is that eight o'clock, I'll do it later.
I got a heart doctor.
Heart doctor, all right. Fourteen or seventeen?
Fourteen.
Close.
Fourteen, it's on the Friday?
That's right, that's right, exactly, Friday.
What day did you?
Sorry, seventeen, is that the?
I'm sorry, I still not here.
April seventeenth?
April seventeenth, okay.
What about the eighteenth, you'll be here for a CRA meeting.
That's right, yeah.
Do it all in one day?
Do it all in one day?
Eighteenth.
Yeah, that's a good idea. Yeah.
What time would you like to?
We can pack it on either end of the CRA meeting.
Okay, CRA.
Like a CRA starts at one.
One thirty?
One thirty, so maybe just.
Okay.
Do you have a restore ID? Uh, they're, they're canceled, it's not starting until whenever I said it was, so, thank you for reminding me. I think they, they moved them to Wednesday's now or something, it's April, it's not that day.
So, I have a question for you, on this property, Miss Bragdon, this, what's the retail value on that piece of property? Yeah, I did.
It's probably more than what she's, she's offering.
I'm sure it's more than fifty thousand, five or nine eight.
Now, she said that fifty thousand was just for the city of Carolina.
Right.
That wasn't for?
That's the NCA for.
They were giving it to us, really, at a market price.
I, I can look it up.
We'll discuss that in a special.
I'll pull it up.
And we'll talk to Miss Bragdon, I saw her cell sign on it.
Yes, you said. Yes, someone should get in touch with it.
Yeah.
I haven't talked to her.
I know for a fact, they was talking about putting a hundred thousand dollars back on this property. I don't know if her offer still stands.
She told me it did, she come and talked to me.
Okay.
Okay, and, and, you know, I, I think the city should buy it anyway, because we, we have no, we have no property that we can use.
Market value on the tax assessor is eighty-eight thousand eight hundred.
Yeah, that's a part.
Yeah, yeah.
We could always go to City Hall if they had to. Well, can't we discuss all this in a special?
We can, if you wanna go, we can discuss it now, I mean, we're not adjourned, and then it's on the agenda, so.
I think it's a good idea to set up.
I mean, you just have, you just have to bite the bullet, it's all, it's all, it is.
We can bite the bullet.
The property is big enough to fit a City Hall.
Yeah.
The property's big enough to fit, we could buy that piece of property and put a City Hall almost cheaper than what everybody else tried to sell us just property for.
Yeah, I agree with you.
The buggers wouldn't even give us a.
They won't buy one for us.
And that's just.
Well, Jessica, this big property, I mean.
Yeah, and now, and Courtney, what did Mr. Davis want for the old acre of realty? I can't remember.
I don't either, but it was high.
About three thousand bucks.
No, but he said he had a price.
He said he would sell it.
One point two, something like that, I mean, it was just like, you gotta be kidding me.
Well, it's a, it's a old shank, I would be just like you. It's a old shank, huh?
They all forget the noise.
Yeah, yeah.
It's a terry.
Tear it down, just send it in. I agree with Frank, the property, we need to consider it in our meet with about first.
But now, in the workshop, we can't vote, we won't be able to vote till next, till the next month.
Let's vote, we have.
You could have a special meeting. Somebody wanna call her?
Don't have her number.
Well, we could, we could vote on it, and if it doesn't stay, what we can.
We'll find out this, sir.
Call her.
Can't do this.
Yeah, we need to, it's just like any other purchase of city property. We just find, we got appraisal, we go through the.
Okay.
He's calling to see though if.
Yeah, it's still available, absolutely, absolutely, yeah.
And we can always instead of having a workshop, have a special meeting, just then we can vote on it.
Okay.
I got a bunch of people to get up.
Is it taking you that long, Mr. Frank, to look up, um, her number?
Y'all need public comment while we're waiting on this phone, y'all?
Oh, there she is.
Mr. Power?
Y'all thought I didn't know her, did you?
None.
I would say it'd look pretty good coming into town, you know, it'd be right there.
And Anovia has done some plans, and there will, a building will fit on there, y'all have a conceptual.
Yeah, Greg, Greg's done one too.
And if you, if you all could go over and look at the South Chucky City Hall, of course, that would. And if you, if you all could go over and look at South Copy City Hall, of course, that would be a good idea.
I've already looked at it.
To have something built specifically for us.
Real nice.
Something that you're gonna last forty years.
Hey, Matt, hey, this is Frank Mathis. Listen, we're having a city meeting. We wanna know if that offer of fifty thousand on that piece of land still stands. He said yes.
Okay.
Okay, thank you much.
Right to the point.
Okay.
Get to the point.
Get over it. Now, we know the property is available, what we gotta do.
Well, if there's, if there's anybody that wants to make a motion to move forward, we can...
I'll make a motion we move forward on the Bragman property.
All right.
And we'll get appraisal done up for this next.
I'll say it.
Okay, so, fifty thousand is not...
Yeah.
Not, yeah, I know it's... I mean, you could, you could end up putting that much in the Hexport building out, or thirty...
My session taught us something, fifty thousand.
All right. So we have a motion by Commissioner Walden and a second by Commissioner Mathis to, uh, for the potential purchase of the Bragman property at fifty thousand dollars and to, from Mr. Hartman or Courtney to seek out an appraisal on that. And I feel sure, but I don't know, I don't know, Ms. Bragman may have an up-to-date survey on that from Roddenberry.
I'm sure. It's been surveyed. I've seen the market.
She uses Roddenberry.
Sure that she has.
Okay, so then, but that's an appraisal.
I'm not hearing what property.
The one right down here on the corner of ninety-eighth on Ms. Bragman's property.
Oh, okay. I thought that's what we were talking about, but that's some kind of bill I didn't...
Fifty-five hundred thousand.
Okay.
Mr. Francis Collins.
Yeah, that, once you've been saying it.
All right, then. We have a motion by Commissioner Walden, a second by Commissioner Mathis. Is there any more discussion? All right, then. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, then the motion carries. All right, made the first step forward. Okay, so that's...
Yeah, let's announce that as a special.
All right, there being, go further business. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
Wait, wait, thank you.
We have a special meeting.
Let's have a special meeting at three o'clock on April eighteenth following the CRA meeting.
Okay, or shortly after.
Yep.
At three, approximately three. Okay, so may I have a motion for the special meeting April eighteenth at approximately three P.M.?
I'll make the motion.
Okay, and a second?
I'll say it.
Okay, all right. A motion by Commissioner Massey, second by Commissioner Walden for special meeting. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion carries. And any further business? Any further business? Okay, then may I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make the motion to adjourn.
Okay, okay. Motion by Commissioner Massey, a second by Commissioner Mathis to adjourn. And any more discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, no opposed? And that motion carries.